Good evening and welcome to the October 15th, 2024 School Committee Meeting. And this meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. All right, we're going to start off tonight with open public comment, and I do not believe that there is any. So we're going to skip that. We're going to go right along to the approval of minutes. Now, we have two sets of minutes here in our packet. First one will be the special meeting July 29th, 2024. Do you have any discussion or questions on this? Yes, Mr. Ruder?
If there's none, I was going to move that we accept the July 29, 2024 special meeting minutes as presented this evening.
My second. All right, any further discussion or questions? Seeing that, all in favor for approving the minutes from the special meeting on July 29th? And that would be an approval of 5:00. Second set of minutes would be for the regular meeting, October 27th. Question of August, sorry, not October, August 27, 2024. Any discussions or questions on these?
Can I have a?
No, I make a motion to accept the minutes for the School Committee Meeting on August 27, 2024.
My second.
Any further discussion or questions?
No.
Hearing that, all in favor of approval of those minutes? And that one would be unanimous at 5:00 as well. Thank you so much. We're going to move along to everybody's favorite teaching and learning highlights, and we have Mr. Worth from the Burroughs School. Welcome, and thank you so much.
Hi, good evening, School Committee members. It's just me tonight. So unlike traditional teaching and learning highlights where there might be a group of people coming, this is really something that was near and dear to my heart last year, something that I worked on as a project giving back to our community. So I'm presenting alone tonight. But there's a special reason that I feel the need to present this in front of you, and you'll see that in a few minutes. So the idea of learning a little bit about our namesake, Mabel Burroughs, came from a third grade field trip that I attended last year. Our third grade students have the pleasure every year of going on a History of Foxborough tour. They come here to Town Hall, they go to the schoolhouse, they go to Memorial Hall. I am not really big into personally global history or national history, but I do really appreciate local history, and it was amazing to learn more about our town here. What I felt like was missing after that is really some more local history that really brought us back to the Burroughs School. I couldn't find a lot of information on the Burroughs School. I knew a little bit about it just from my time there. I asked around a little bit, and I was able to get in touch with Mabel Burroughs granddaughter who lives in Massachusetts. Debbie Kennedy was absolutely critical in helping me to get a little bit more information. She provided me with a wonderful scrapbook. She put me in touch with other family members of Mabel Burroughs, and she actually put me in touch with some former students of Mabel Burroughs who are still living in the area, which was fantastic. So I have the pleasure tonight of presenting all of that information that I gathered in front of you. Last year, I got to share this with our students. So we had a whole school assembly. I shared this with our students, and then following that presentation, I shared it with our families, so that everyone in our community has a little bit more information about the person who our school is named after and who contributed so much to our community. So this is Mabel Burroughs. She is an absolutely unbelievable woman. She was a teacher, a principal, a Foxborough leader, a school namesake, a wife, a mother of four, and a grandmother of eight. We often tell our students that they can be anything they want. Instead of that, I like to say that they can be everything they want. You don't need to choose just one thing, and Mabel Burroughs did just that. This is one of the pictures from her scrapbook. I just thought it was kind of neat to see her class of 1950, 1951. These were third graders. You know, she had handwritten all of the students' names. This was just one of many pages in her scrapbook that had her classes over the years. She was a teacher for a long time, so she had many, many students. And this is a timeline. Again, I created this for students, so bear with me a little bit. It's not her entire life, but it just kind of points out some highlights. In 1885, she was born in Northern Ireland. She crossed the Atlantic Ocean when she was only six months old, and she settled in Revere, Massachusetts. She graduated from Wheelock College, and that's when she started her teaching career in Boston. She married her husband in 1911. In 1921, she moved to East Foxborough with her husband and four children at the time. She served on the Foxborough School Committee for 12 years. She was really someone who saw the need to give back to the community, and being a school committee member for 12 years, that's what made me so excited to share this information with you tonight. She was involved in the local community in the Bethany Church. In 1945, at the end of World War II, there was really a large teacher shortage, and they were looking for teachers, really anyone who was willing to be a teacher at that point. She taught first, second, and third graders in one classroom at the Pratt School. So this was a common practice at the turn of the century, but at this point, it had kind of faded out, although she was willing to accept that challenge, and I'm sure she did a great job at it. After many years of teaching, she became a principal in 1961. That's my personal connection to her. Kind of in my research, I wasn't aware of that fact until I discovered that in the scrapbook. In honor of her dedication to education, the school was named after her in 1969. This is a dedication pamphlet that was, again, part of that rich history. In 1969, on June 1st, in dedication to her, the Burroughs School got its name. You can see there's a kind of faded picture there. This is the actual invitation from the dedication ceremony. She returned to the school many times after that dedication. She was still a local resident. After retiring as a full-time educator, she worked as a substitute well into her 80s. She lived to be 102. This picture is at the Burroughs School on her 100th birthday. It's kind of hard to see, but there's a cake there that is the Burroughs School, and there's two students. I'm not sure if they didn't want to be in the picture, but I think the focus really is her and the cake and the celebration of her 100th birthday. The scrapbook was full of pictures like this, though. It was really amazing to see the school and see, you know, her visiting the school. Last year, last week, excuse me, we had a visit from the Massachusetts School Building Association, and they actually toured us around the school. It was part of a post-occupancy evaluation that they're completing now that the Burroughs School has gone through three years prior to its renovation. Walking around the school, I couldn't help but think that Mabel Burroughs would be very proud of where we're at today. She would be very proud of the renovation and how well the building is being taken care of. I know that she visited it many times throughout her life, came back to it, and I just felt really proud of that moment. I felt like, you know, she was with us there in the school. The naming of the school is actually a great story. So the School Building Committee at the time visited Mabel one day at her house. As a teacher of many years, the thought occurred to her that probably they had come to ask her advice about the matter connected to the new elementary school. To her surprise, they said, "If you are willing, we would actually like to name the new school after you." Her response was, "I feel that there are far more worthy recipients than I." And she suggested three other names at the time. Just, again, an incredible person, very humble, very, you know, appreciative of their recommendation to name the school. Eventually, they did convince her, and the school was named after her. This is a newspaper article that was written about that with those quotes in it from the time, again, from the scrapbook. Another thing that I highlighted when I shared this with students is every year, Mabel would take her class on a field trip to the circus. She was kind of famous around town for this, taking her class to the circus. We unfortunately don't take students to the circus anymore, but I thought this was just so great. It's her with her whole class in front of a school bus. Like I said, after she retired, she did substitute teach for a very long time, well into her 80s. This is another article that I really enjoyed reading with a quote, "I wish I could be teaching today." Even after she retired, even after she would come back to the school, she just wanted to be in the classroom with students. She really loved the school. She loved being with kids. And lastly, my favorite thing that I actually learned about her at the very end of my time with her granddaughter, when her granddaughter remarked on our new mascot at the time, she said, "I would really like your mascot. It's a cute bulldog, just like Mabel had." And I was taken back. That was not something that I had planned on. That was not something that we actually knew before that. But Mabel had a bulldog, and the bulldog's name was Muggsy, and she loved that bulldog very much, so I think it was all really meant to be.
That's awesome. Great job.
That's fantastic.
Great.
So I'm not the expert on this. I do know quite a bit from my research, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and I can't provide the answer. I'll find it out.
Thanks for this presentation. You should be super proud. That school looks way different than it did in some of those pictures, and I'm sure she would be proud to see it today and how well Foxborough has just really paid tribute to her name over the years. But thank you for doing this. I mean, this is amazing. Thanks, I love it. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
No, I appreciate learning more about Mabel.
Yeah.
It was great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. It's always nice to see where the excitement comes from and where the presentations come from. All right, we're going to go right on to Superintendent Update. Dr. Burtos.
I will first start off congratulating our golf team that they were a state qualifier, and the Hawk Championship is after that. It's kind of a reverse order this year, but congratulations to the golf team. The other announcement that I wanted to make, and I have a little bit of a sneak peek here, and this is, so Foxborough Public Schools has been named as a Unified Champion School District. So this was presented on Friday. Karen Frazier and then some others were part of a panel discussion to talk about all of the things that Foxborough has done. They talked a lot about the Ahearn, but in order to be a Unified Champion School District, you have to meet a number of criteria, and we're going to have that as the teaser, if you will. We'll have a teaching and learning highlight in the future. But it really is such a tribute to all of the work at all five schools. So when we think about, first of all, like when we think about the whole school piece and unified sports and some of the different examples that you're very much aware of when it came to fans in the stands, school-wide events, the number of unified teams that we've added at different levels, in order to have this distinction, it's not just one school. You have to have had this go across the district. And so it really speaks to all of the work from administrators in the schools, to our Special Education Department, to our teachers, to our best buddies. There are so many different layers that are there. So it really goes back to fostering, you know, an environment where we have relationships that are very inclusive and being able to bring the full community in a different way. So the Massachusetts Special Olympics Conference that took place on Friday. This was presented more to come, but just really wanted to do the shout-out as far as all of the work that's been there. We were one of nine districts that were recognized.
It's amazing.
At that conference on Friday. So it's really exciting. And then also to have our administrators and teachers that were there to share all of the things that Foxborough has done when we think about adapted phys ed. You heard some of that from the curriculum review and the work and scheduling and be able to do some of that curriculum changes in our own schedules, as well as unified sports and all of the different things that have been added and focused on.
That's wonderful.
Anyway, that's exciting. It is National School Bus Safety Week, October 21st through the 25th. Just want to bring that up. One of the things that you'll see, and you've seen in the slides, I think when we talk about school bus and transportation and that school rules, they extend to the school bus. That's just another school environment that's there, and it's really important. Our bus drivers are the first person that our students see in the morning. They can, you know, set the tone for the day for many of our students, and they end the day because we have over 50% of ridership for our buses, and they keep our students safe. And so just a shout-out to our bus drivers, and then also to think about the School Safety Week when it comes particularly to all of our riderships with our buses. So this is a reminder that it is important to stay safe and to follow all of our safety guidelines and tips for school safety for school buses. The only other thing that I had was to circle back to representation with the Foxborough Education Association contract negotiations, because their contract is with you, and we need at least two of you for the FEA, the teachers, and then for educational assistance to serve on those. We do have a date to start on Election Day, actually. It's our Professional Development Day, but that's the first day for teachers at 3 o'clock. That's the first date which will start off that, which is earlier than what we've been able to do in the past. So that's my ask as far as interest.
Are you looking for two committee members, correct?
Yes.
All right.
For each committee?
For each committee.
Mr. Ruder?
I don't have to, but I enjoy it a great deal. It's something I've done a lot with at various sides of my career, so I would put my name forward for the FEA, the teacher.
The teacher, okay.
Yep. Anyone else for the teacher?
But if the need is elsewhere.
Need, I see Need's hand. Policy Subcommittee sticking together.
Well, and Michelle had reached out to me, and she was interested in being on the teachers' negotiations as well.
Yeah, I said I was available.
Okay, so good to.
I can do the other one. It does not matter.
Ed assistant, okay.
I mean, I said I could be flexible, too. I can do either.
All right. Whatever your preferences. I guess just, yeah. Whatever you guys prefer.
Does not matter.
Okay.
Michelle had reached out to me a couple of weeks ago after I had asked at the last School Committee Meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that that was known.
So we'll put Michelle and Brent on teachers, and would you like to be an ed assistant? Okay. And Rob, are you available?
My schedule is really unpredictable right now, so.
Okay.
I may not be able to participate.
Okay, I can step in if needed, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I will send the dates to the two of you and the times, but as of right now, really the first date is November 5th, 3 o'clock in the IGO Media Center, and then we'll go forward with dates, figuring those out at that first meeting, too.
Great.
And the only other, just a reminder, we have Sarah, yourself, and Brent for Niasq on Monday, the 28th, at 1 o'clock for the Niasq visit.
Niasq visit. We'll be there and square.
All that.
Perfect. Anything else? Actually, is this an appropriate time to ask about the representative for the Audit Committee during Superintendent Update? I think we had mentioned maybe roundtabling it, or do you want us to wait till Community updated?
No, that's fine. I don't have any more information.
You don't have any more information? No candidates have stepped up through your channels? Okay.
No, unfortunately not.
Okay, all right.
Just point of information, do we know, when do we need a member?
At this point, it could.
Yesterday?
Yeah. So it's the balance of the person. So it's only for like a year, but I think it's, we're getting into budget season, so.
I mean, over the course of years, we've gone where we did not have one, so it's not like a place that we've not been in before.
Yeah, okay.
But we should have.
But we should have one.
Okay.
But again, it's somebody from the community that's going to have some kind of financial acumen that you're going to want.
Yeah.
And specifically, it's through the budget process, independent of, or is it also through audit as well?
Well, and I know Karen had talked about this at the last meeting. One of the things was trying to be part of the.
Picking the new audit firm.
Picking the new audit firm.
I have a meeting coming up with.
Okay, so it'll be related to that, but it's really, the more pressing is the budget cycle?
For the Audit Committee, I would say more auditing and picking, choosing the new audit firm is going to be an important thing.
That's helpful as we solicit interest. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. I figured I'd just see if you had anything on that, because I know I haven't heard anything from outside or from the committee, which is why I didn't add it to the agenda, but I just figured I'd mention it.
And I've not had anybody come forward either.
Okay, all right. That's where we're at. Good enough. Anything else?
I didn't have anything else.
All right, well, actually, we have, we're going to go right over to Stevie, to our student, School Committee Representative Updating. Stevie?
So we just had the French exchange students come in this weekend. It's really exciting seeing them all here. They're all having a great time so far, it seems like. I haven't had a chance to talk to any of them yet, but it seems like it's going good. I have a couple of friends who are hosting. They say that they have a lot of activities. We're going to have a shadow day for them, where they come to all of the classes with the students someday. This week, I believe, in two days. So that'll be fun, getting them to see everybody. There is currently a signup and like educational thing about signing up to vote and registering to vote in the cafeteria during all of the lunches. It's set up all throughout the day, but there's someone there to actually talk to people during the lunches, which is really good, getting like students who are the main sponsors of that, not teachers or anyone else. It's really fun to see. This week is Spirit Week because obviously Homecoming is coming up. It's going to be really fun. Everyone's super excited. We have our Foxborough Day this Friday, which will just be really fun, seeing everybody being all like dressed up for the town and the school and everyone. So yeah, that's all so far going on right now, but that's.
Dance on Saturday.
Dance it, yep. Homecoming.
Thank you, Stevie. That sounds great. Actually, it's kind of exciting that the French exchange students will get to see a football game, the Spanish exchange students. It was like the first time in decades that they've come, and it was a bye week, so it'll be nice to see the French exchange students get to enjoy that event. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to go right on to the Culture and Climate Survey results. Dr. Burtos and Dr. Burroughs, I'm going to have you guys take it away.
All right, so we obviously have a ton of slides that are here and in your packet. We're not going to go over all of those, but at any point that we're going through, excuse me, if you have any questions, please stop us. We're going to highlight some of the things that caught our eye, anything that you're interested in that maybe that we don't touch upon. Again, ask questions along the way. But just to kind of give a frame for this, it's the 12th administration that we've given of this survey through K-12 Insight. It is a very lengthy survey. It is given to students in grades five through 12, and then parents, and then faculty as well. It is given at the end of the school year, so it was open for three weeks in April. Last year, we had the window open for longer than that period of time, but what we found is it's the first, really two weeks, to be honest, that you see the most participation. After that, once it gets to the third week, we send, or K-12 Insight sends the reminders. It's completely anonymous for all faculty, students, and parents, but after that point in time, you're just not garnering the participation. So it's done in the month of April. We try to get that window before April vacation. At the same time, there's some things that happen at the end of the year, so you're not able to account within the survey data for that. It is perception survey. It is based on what the people who complete the survey, so you really can't extrapolate it out to everyone else. But I can tell you, over the last 12 years, the consistency in results, it's pretty consistent, even though we've seen participation wane with parents, and particularly this year and over time. The participation rate for faculty and then for students, because we have more of a control, particularly with students, because they're taking it during the school day, that has stayed really consistent. We've seen a drop with the participations, I said, with parents. We have about 15% of our parents that are participating, but that's actually a really good number when you compare it to the national level. So we do have engaged parents. When we see something like 15%, I think we are quick to say, oh, that's not that many. But when you look at who you get to participate in the survey and compare it to national trends, it's not as what we think with it being a lower number.
It's better than our town elections get from a turnout perspective.
Good point.
So in relative terms, it is actually a strong number.
Yep.
As far as the administration of this, again, it's representing those who take the survey. So what we thought we would do is kind of give the big picture here. All of the perspectives are on the same dimension. So they're asked academic preparation, student support, school leadership, faculty relations and support, parent engagement and involvement, safety and behavior, school operations, school transitions, and then diversity, equity, and inclusion was added in the last three years of this administration of this survey. When we look at the big picture of this, the results that we might see, a lot of them are very similar from year to year. It's very helpful data at the school level particularly, because we can then look at different initiatives that are taking place. When we look at the Plan for Success as an example, and our focus areas, to see how that is trending over time, to see if we see changes, because if we're not, and we know that we're putting a lot of time and energy in that area, then that's telling us something at the same time. When we have particular things like COVID, when we look at our data pre-COVID to post-COVID, when we're looking at academic supports or academic preparation, that's really interesting to look at, particularly if we dig in at the student level, too, to see what happens at the middle school level versus the high school level. What we're presenting is district data, but what principals and the rest of us do, we dig into that and look at it more at the granular level to see, well, what does this look like if we take students as an example when it comes to supports at the middle school versus high school? We take into account students very different when we think about the middle school years versus the high school years. You have a different level of maturity. You have different interests. We have some different things in place at the middle school versus high school, and then we see how that plays out in the data as well. So with that said, if we look at the participation overall, we have a good cross-section of representation from all levels. You have about 50% participating from the elementary level, 50% of parents participating at the secondary level. When you look at the grades across, you have pretty close representation. You've got a good amount from each of the grade levels. And then looking at the overall data from faculty, it is 85% faculty and then 15% of our educational assistants that make up the participation that's here. We continue to have the strong majority of participants. They are satisfied with what the quality of the Foxborough Public Schools bring forward. It is a trend of stability. It's a trend of high marks regarding the education that students receive in relation to what faculty and what administrators, academic supports, and again, being prepared for the next grade level and what comes next in education. So every year, we see a lot of similar results when it comes to that high level, which that's really important, because to be able to maintain some of these really high percents and have that stability, that really speaks volumes for what we're doing in Foxborough for students and the supports for faculty and staff, as well as for families. When we look at the dimensions over time here, one of the ones that we wanted to point out here is that last one from the parents' perspective on safety and behavior. That encompasses from a physical plant for safety. It encompasses when we think about counseling support, having someone students can go and to talk to, whether it's a school problem, whether it's a personal problem, whether it's understanding that the things that we've done when we think about Pillar One and our Plan for Success under facilities and infrastructure when it comes to drills, all of those things are going to be incorporated under safety and behavior. So when we see increases there, that's important to us, because we know that we've done a lot there. You've heard a lot about that, particularly under the Plan for Success under Pillar One, as well as the additional trainings that we've done for staff that we've done through, whether it's drills that take place, whether it's incidents that could happen in schools in the world that we live in today. whether it's incidents that could happen in schools in the world that we live in today. We also are seeing a closer alignment of parents with safety and behavior in that dimension, with where our faculty is and their level of agreement as well. So again, strong agreement over time in these particular areas. When we look at academic preparation, if you look at pre-COVID versus post-COVID, the percent of agreement here, the average percent change is really about 1% to 2% over time, which is not significant. But what is significant is that we're able to maintain those high levels of agreement, which is critically important, and then we're not seeing that wane. So that has been pretty much equal over the years, but when you look from just last year, if you have more than a 3% increase, then they're seeing that as significant. So you can see there, my students prepared to do well at the grade level, receiving effective instruction for their abilities, teacher having appropriate expectations and learning. Every one of those areas, you see increases from last year, and you're seeing plus 3, plus 4, plus 6% in those areas as far as levels of agreement. As we look forward to this next slide, and the support from teachers, from counselors, from other support staff, again, to see those increases that are there, particularly knowing the environment that we've been in from pre-COVID to post-COVID, we want to be able to see those increases, because the supports for students, some of them have changed over time, is the needs have changed when it comes to academic support, when it comes to social emotional learning, and all of those things that we focused on in the Plan for Success. So this is three years' worth of data. We have three years on that plan in our focus areas as well. So that's another thing that we're looking as a metric to see. Are we seeing gains in areas that we focused on over the last three years?
Anything to add before we continue to move on?
You keep going.
Okay.
It's hard to see the slides from there and back and forth with the glasses, so. Going through some of these with parents to get to the overall here for highest and lowest ranking indicators. And then I'll go through this. We'll give a couple of comments, and then if there's anything for parents that we want to stop and go back as far as conversation pieces here. So each year, we look at what were the highest level of agreements as far as strongly agree or agreeing. If you see an asterisk that's there, those, for instance, in the highest level in green, those were also, if there's an asterisk, those were also the highest indicators from last year. So where you see the dimension of parent engagement and academic preparation that are there, those, those are really important to see, that we have that consistent high marks there for preparing students at the next grade level, and parents seeing that, being kept informed on students' grades, being able to check in with them and make sure their homework is done every night. You see a difference of that from elementary, middle, and high school parents over time, which makes sense as students become more independent over time. But many of those are there from last year as well, continuing to be really high indicators. And then even if you, it's not listed there, but if we look at, like 96% of families are strongly agreeing or agreeing that they're being kept informed on things such as workshops or events or student performances, 96%, that's even higher than last year. So last year, as an example, it was 92% of families were still agreeing and strongly agreeing, but every one of those areas that are listed there are higher than last year as far as the percent agreement. And then the lower levels of agreement, when you see those, even from last year, you have lower percentages is what you want to see as far as disagreeing, if they're saying, you know, my student is excited to go to school. Last year, as an example, it was 24% as opposed to 20% this year. So you want to see those go down, and that's what we're seeing as well.
And new to our highest ranking indicators this year as well is the, my student's school has maintained open lines of communication with families. That's really nice to see. Many of our principals have, have, have done a weekly, if not bi-weekly, communications home with families to help keep them informed and help keep our families active in school events. So it's, it's nice to see that that has made its way to our top five. And another piece that I wanted to point out before we move away from parents, if you go to the previous slide, if you take a look down at the bottom here, even though these are 62% and 65% strongly agreeing or agreeing, if you remember, those were, those were significantly lower over the course of the past few years. We've seen increases in those, in, in those indicators. Staff members take time to learn about students' cultures. Staff members consider how cultural influences affect the way my student communicates. We're really proud of that increase, because it's been a significant focus on our district PD days to support our staff in understanding how cultural differences might actually impact how a student engages in their, in their learning. So it's nice to see that our parents have noticed that, and we see similar numbers, similar gains with our student group, as well as our, our parent group here.
So we wanted to pause as far as from the parent perspective. If there was anything that caught your eye that you wanted to discuss further, or any other questions that you had?
I don't remember the survey. I'm sorry. It's been a couple of years now. Wait, I have to do this. Paul's not here to yell at me. So I don't remember the survey. Sorry. Is there an opportunity, so a couple of things. Does K-12 Insights track drop off? So people that start the survey but don't complete the survey?
They have, you'll see a difference in their end factor from question to question. So we'll have some that have answered questions and some that have not answered questions.
Okay, but they don't track who starts and then who drops off, like after, and where they're dropping off?
I don't know the answer to that question. I can certainly find out.
Okay. Thank you. Was there, and is the other question I have, I don't remember this. Was there an opportunity at any point in completing the survey for someone to provide more context to, as far as feedback goes?
Yes. There are a number of different open response questions that are there. So for instance, the first question that's asking on the overall school quality, if you're measuring it as excellent or good or fair. I mean, we've seen an increase in moving from, although excellent and good, that percentage might stay around the same. We're seeing an increase in moving over to excellent. But if they, there's also a question that says, what can we do to get a higher mark from you? Like if they were to say good or fair. So then that's an open-ended question that they can then provide that additional feedback. They also can answer the survey. It is a long survey. It is long. And they can do it based on if they have a different experience at the elementary level versus middle school, and go and answer that survey separately for each child.
Okay. And then just on that same theme, and how many people take it, just rough percentage, how many parents actually take advantage of that opportunity to provide more detailed feedback? I know K-12 tells you that, but.
Yes. Pages and pages. Because that's where we're able to glean, if we see some of the drops, one way or the other, what it means. More at a school level, and it's through verbatim reports that we have. So every single faculty or staff member that answers, if they put in a comment, we get them, we read them. Same thing with our families, same thing with students. Students are kind of funny at times with some of the comments that they, they put in. And then you'll see things like, are you really reading this? People who put those comments in. Yes, we are. So we're looking at some of those trends that come from that qualitative data, if you will, that anecdotal comments as well.
Thank you. Not done. Was there anything in looking at the data at the district level that stood out to you from a parent's perspective? Either feedback that you expected to get that you didn't, or scores that you expected to be higher that weren't as high as you expected, or scores that were lower than you expected them to be?
I think some of the things that we see, and we've seen it with not just parents, with faculty and staff too, is the comments on cell phone use and not wanting cell phones in schools and the distractions that are there. There, there's a lot of comments that come to that. So I think that with, you know, that's an example. When we, we look at, I can tell you the data as far as, and we'll, we'll get to it a little bit later, in enforcing rules, behaviors, you know, if that's done in a, in an equitable way, diving into that. A couple of things come into that. One, there's a, the new student discipline law, where you have to have many different avenues for a student before you can suspend a student. That comes out, because somewhere like, why is the student still in my class if they're, you know, behaving in a certain way? We have to educate our faculty, we have to educate our families, that the law has changed. There's, there's different things that you have to do. So that changes. We also dig into that data and take that back, and that has, really was the impetus for a lot of the conversations at the beginning of the school year before we started, when we think about the cell phones. And you heard Dr. Donovan, we, you know, they're not allowed during class. We have the caddies, and, and really getting parents behind us. And we knew that we were going to have parents behind us because of the comments that they were saying in the survey.
Thank you. On the highest and lowest ranking indicators, I know that you have this, and we're just, and it's not on this slide. I think I actually asked this last year too, but, and that wasn't a dig. I'm sorry. I was just trying, that was, I promise you that was not a criticism. I would love to know, particularly for the ones that are repeats on either the highest or lowest, what they were in the previous three years, like we did on the other pages. Because I would love to know if some of these are trending upward or downward, to see if it's interesting. Like I, there's a little bit of a breakdown, right, where you say, we get a very high feedback on students' school, and student's school has maintained open lines of communication with families. I make sure my school, I make sure my student does their homework every night, and my student has been prepared to do well on this grade level. All three of those things could, could, you could infer from that that you actually do know what your children, your child is being taught in school. However, one of the lowest responses is, I am, is whether the parent is kept informed about what the student is learning in school. So interesting and great, yes, if you're asking, did you do your homework? That's one question. If you're asking, okay, what did you, what homework did you have? That's a different question, right? So, and again, not criticizing anybody's parenting style or anything like that, but it's a, I would love to know, particularly in the, particularly in the ones that are lowest ranking, where did they score? And again, is that score going up or down from what we've seen in the previous years?
Yeah.
Just interesting notes. I know you have the data, and I can certainly, if I really want to geek out one day with, with Dr. Burrows, I can do that. Because, yeah.
Come on over.
Well, like that one in particular, not, last year, it was 24% disagreed or strongly disagreed, and then this year it was 19%.
And also, when I look at that particular indicator, I'm thinking about our curriculum library that we've just published, and it didn't exist last year. So I, I am hoping that that metric moves from, from this year to next year. I view that as being a little bit more, a little bit more of an indicator of whether or not parents are aware of the lessons or the upcoming units, rather than being aware of whether or not their child has completed their homework, which I think are kind of two separate things.
Absolutely. But you could, again, you can infer, my point is you can infer from the homework that they're doing about some level of, depending again, how you choose to interact with your kid around their schoolwork, right? So I appreciate all that, and then that was not a setup for a plug for the curriculum library, but I love the way you.
But I took that opportunity.
I love that. I'm so proud of you.
One of the other things too, that, that we've seen over time as far as that, that level of communication and what parents see, because students are doing things in teams, parents don't have that access. And so that's been something that we've had to educate parents to say, it's there, you're not seeing it because it's within teams.
I, that's, to me, that's an interest I would, again, that, that one item, for whatever reason, is sticking in my head. I would love to know what people think they're answering when they're answering that question, either how, how they're scoring it, why they're scoring it that way. It's a really interesting question that, you know, if that's the actual question, what, 10 words? There are a lot of different ways to look at what those 10 words mean. So that's just an interesting question to me. So I'll, I'll pass to somebody else at this point.
Pass to you. I'll pass to you.
Yeah. All right. So as we look at these dimensions under faculty and staff, so again, it's asking a lot of the same questions. We can see over time here that we've continued to have high marks, and it's sustained over time with the quality of school. When you look at the last three years here, this is information, again, as I said at the beginning, that it helps inform us at the school level where we are, where we need to go, where we've been, what we've done, and how it impacts each of the particular years. So schools will form goals based on, sometimes to Rob's point, it's the verbatim data of written out, because people can take a question and what they're thinking. I can tell you, as a middle schooler, when they're seeing the same question as a high schooler, they're thinking about that differently. So the same goes for faculty and staff and parents and everyone else. So that's why some of those verbatim reports are really important to kind of tease out. Well, if, so as an example, going back to communication, one of the levels at the district level was saying, and we saw a decrease in having communication from the district level. I will tell you personally, that's one of the reasons that I started with the superintendent spotlight monthly, to be able to get more information out there. Principals, they've really, the uniformity of their newsletters through sway and having more information. We see that now, like the positive feedback of having that through the principal's newsletters and how that's changed. The translation feature, when we see that being able to be accessible to families as well, we, we see that feedback that comes. So taking this information, regardless of the dimension, it helps for principals and their staff, as well as at the district level, to say, well, what do our goals need to look like? How do we need to change them? It happened when we had a changeover with 50% of our school leadership two years ago. You start to see different information that comes forward, and you need to act on that in a different way.
So two things that I really wanted to point out on this slide is that 95% of our faculty and staff strongly agree or agree that learning standards and expectations are clearly explained to students in the school, and curriculum instruction and assessment are aligned to student support, are aligned to support student learning in this school. It's really nice to see those numbers so high. I mean, it's, again, as Dr. Burdus has said, you know, our numbers have stayed consistently high, but it, it is really nice to see that 95% mark makes me, makes me happy when we reach that, that level of the metric. And it, it's nice to see that there's such agreement on that, and that we're holding our students to high academic standards and supporting them through those high standards and mastering those.
When we look from the faculty lens and we look at school leadership, the bottom one there on the level of decision-making and influence, that's when we go back to some of that granular data to see, like when we see 54% agreement, and then in the last couple of years, you see 74, 73%, you can see differences between times, between schools, coming out of COVID, coming out of things that are things that we have to do, that are, you know, from a, from a state level versus we don't have. It's those, whether it's an unfunded mandate, it's, you know, the new discipline law, it's those kinds of things and following that. Those are when we, we see that much of a difference. Like, what happened? What, what is that? What's the real story behind that?
You also had a slew of new administrators between those.
Yes.
Those years, which, I mean, to me, that's interesting. I mean, you guys have the more granular data, but when I look at that slide, it's, it's clear, at least from three years ago to two years ago, there's a honeymoon period of new positive feelings. People are very excited about the changes that have been implemented, you know? And then I'm seeing this as, again, not without looking at the granular data, but a return to normalcy and people being more discerning about.
And positivity.
About their new leadership.
But if you look the, but if you look at the five years prior to that year, it was in the mid-'70s for those five years as well.
Interesting.
So it's just that. It's like an anomaly that's there. So, it's just that, it's like an anomaly that's there.
Okay.
But when we think about what was going on within our world at that time and coming out of COVID, there were a lot of decisions that we didn't get to make, that were forced upon us at times. So, that's still, we didn't administer the survey in 2020 after the shutdown, so when we go to 2021, 22, that's the first time that it was administered after that, but you still had some after effects.
Oh, yeah.
If you will. But, but when you see something that's that off, then you go back and look at the five years prior, but it was consistent.
Okay.
As we look at some of the areas where it's in regard to collaboration or professional development, those are some things that we look at, well, what's going on at that time, whether it's with our plan for success, whether it's with new curriculum adoptions, whether it's new programs, initiatives, those kinds of things. So, I, there's some interesting pieces here.
I think if you.
That as we dig into it.
Sure, if you toggle between this slide and the next slide, just for, for a quick look, if you take a look at teachers have time available to collaborate with colleagues, you see that, that, that 13% gain from last year to this year for that indicator. And one of the things that we've actually done with our professional development time is we've made sure that we're, we've cut those district PD opportunities up, where 50% of that time is spent with your content area, with your grade level collaborating with your, with your colleagues, and then the other 50% is, is spent on, on our district PD time. So, we've been very intentional about that. So, despite the fact that our professional development number seems to have dipped a little bit, we see that drastic increase on that next slide, and, and that was really our intention for last year's PD time, and we're continuing that this year, to split up that time, break it up, and give our teachers time to collaborate with their contents and grade levels. So, even though that is deceivingly a dip in our numbers, I think there are some positive indicators in, in other areas.
And, Dr. Burrows, was that action taken based on contextual feedback that you got from the survey? Or was that just a?
Yes. We, we survey after every, every PD day. We also push out a couple of PD surveys throughout the school year. We have a monthly professional development newsletter that we share with staff and share PD opportunities. So, we survey them multiple times, and overwhelmingly, our teachers had been asking a couple of years ago for more time to collaborate with colleagues. We saw that showing up as an indicator on this survey. So, we made some shifts in the way that we structured and thought about our district PD days over, over the course of the past few years in order to respond to that.
Okay, so, follow on question. I appreciate all of that. Has that been a, has that been mindfully communicated to the teachers that this is an action that is being taken based on the feedback? Mindfully might be the tricky word, that's the word you shouldn't focus on, I apologize for using it.
We, we do, we try to remind our staff of that. To be honest, teaching is a very hard job, and despite the fact that that may have been announced in PD feedback, and we may be sharing that with staff, you know, they, they may or may not be aware that, that we've made that shift for their benefit, but we are responding to their feedback, we are making those adjustments. I, you know, I, I think we've said it a couple of times, but it wouldn't surprise me if that were, were news.
Okay, yeah, it's, experience tells us that when we take an action, right, we want, and we want based on feedback that we've received, we need to, and I sound like I'm lecturing, and I promise I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I'm not lecturing anybody, but we also need to remind people that we are taking this action based on the feedback. I mean, it's a test, right? So, you're, that's how innovation works. You have, this is what I'm testing, this is the step I've taken, did I get the desired result or not? And if I did, which course do I go? If I didn't, which course do I go, right? So, that's the whole process, and it would be interesting if we're doing that, where, where this number ends up, you know, with the feedback that we get next year.
And to your, to your point earlier about wondering what that data point means, this data point I'm very interested in, when I look at staff being provided time for, for collaboration on the next slide, and then also when I look at a couple of slides ahead, and I don't want to skip too far ahead, but a couple of slides ahead, we talk about social emotional learning.
Yep.
And on slide 29, and if you look at those high marks, the district's providing me with professional development on social emotional learning, that was a PD focus of ours last year. I, I feel, I'm provided with those PD opportunities, I feel prepared to meet the social emotional needs of my students, that has seen an increase, there's an increase in the, in the PD opportunities for SEL, and I'm, I feel the district values social emotional learning and development of its students. So, we do see growth in some other areas that may have been a focus of ours last year. We also focused our professional development on supporting our staff and understanding the cultural differences in culturally responsive teaching practices that support an inclusive learning environment for our students over the course of this past year. And you actually see in the parent data and in the student data, that students are noticing, our parents are noticing, so there, there's been gains in, in other areas there. So, I'm actually very curious, what does that PD metric mean? What are they equating to district PD? Because it looks like there's improvement in all of the areas that we focused on last year.
Excellent, thank you.
Just backing up, just a few slides here. When we, when we go back, one of the things that we've seen from parents as well as from faculty here, when we look at support and addressing, whether it's academic behavioral needs with their children, we've, we've seen some of those areas that have dipped over time. And when we look back, again, pre-COVID of, over those years, that's where you see a difference in the areas of addressing academic or addressing behavioral challenges from pre-COVID to post-COVID. So, we're watching that closely, understanding that it really does kind of separate between that time period and what that looks like. And then, again, that's where we go when we look at those anecdotal comments that are on those verbatim reports, to try to get a little bit more information. Sometimes it's helpful, sometimes it's not. Some of the disciplinary kinds of things that we see in schools, what I'd mentioned before, when it's a matter of, we need to get kids back in class very quickly. You see that more at the secondary level or at the high school as an example. The discipline law and how that's changed and haven't, we, we know, there's a chronic absenteeism even across the state is a conversation that has been, one that's ongoing, it's, it's getting better over time, but we know that if kids are not in class, they're not with who's the most valuable person, which is their teacher and their classroom, and we need them to be, because research consistently shows the most influential factor as far as a student and their academic success, and bar none, what the most important person is, it's the teacher.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what it comes, we need them in school, we need them in classrooms, and if we're having challenging behaviors and things, we need students to be back in their classrooms as quickly as possible, and that support, sometimes, you know, coming out of just different situations, whether it's post-COVID or not, it's, it's more challenging for some students, depending on what they might be going through at that time. And again, the social emotional learning and the whole child has been our focus in being able to support them, not just the academics, but again, the well-rounded piece. A couple of other things that we noticed, looking at this data, I want to go to slide When we look at the, students have access to reliable computers and the internet at school for learning purposes, and we see that dip there when it goes down to the level of agreement is 65% coming from faculty. Here's an example of them not knowing what the technology plan was that was presented at the end of last year, and what we're doing to address some of those issues, because the survey came out prior to that. The other pieces are, over time, that's changed. When we think about going from a bring your own device district to a one-to-one district, that requires a lot more when you think of bandwidth and access to computers, but at the same time, we've also had a great challenge with breakage. And it is, and it's, and a lot of it's not accidental, and it comes down to students, and sometimes the, we feel as though there's a, a different level of care when it's their own device versus being a school-issued device. And so, when we look at the number of devices that are broken in our technology department, and also being down two staff members in the technology department for a good portion of the year, even last year, they do a fantastic job of getting the tech tickets to be out there to support, but when we have the level of computers that are having some of the issues that they are, and having to then provide loner computers to students, it's challenging.
Right.
So, the reliability of computers, sometimes it is student-induced, which then makes it very difficult for teachers, because they don't have their laptop, or they're having to get a loner, and we just don't have the capacity to have that many loners when you already have, it was over 100 of them just in the loner pool for one particular, you know, level. So, there, those are challenges that are real challenges for us, but we can also identify where they're coming from at times too. If we move on, kind of throughout these different slides on faculty, I, I think that one of the big takeaways that we see here is that really high level of agreement in that we are providing a supportive and inclusive school environment. And parents see that it's a focus, faculty see that it's a focus, students see that it's a focus, and that, that's where we're making a difference, and we know that that has been a big focus in our plan for success, whether it's under pillar three or under pillar four. All of that, we've talked many times here, so much of it is intertwined, but it's coming back to being able to make sure that everyone has that sense of belonging. And so, when we see this data and we see these high marks, then we feel as though that our efforts are being realized. So, if we skip to the highest and lowest ranking indicators here, under faculty, there's only one that's there that's a repeat from last year's highest level indicator, but when you look at all of the others that have surfaced as the highest level of agreement, we're here for students, that's our job. And so, when you look at, it's all about academic preparation or student supports that are our highest levels, I think that that speaks volumes as far as what our faculty and staff are in agreement about what our priority is and what it should be, which is the academic preparation and the support of our students. As far as the lower levels indicators there, you've got, the behavior pieces is what we've seen that have come through from parents, from faculty, and even from students, as far as the level of agreement. So, when it comes to following school rules, you, you've got a number of them that are there that are the same ones that were there last year as far as the level of agreement. One of the points that I, that we have made, and Rob, it's to one of the things that you had said too, it's, what do people think when they're answering some of those questions? Because that could be interpreted a different way, and it definitely, when we look at the site level with buildings, you can see some differences that are there too.
Right, so, and I, just to call out for people that may watch, may watch this later, what's interesting when we look at the lowest ranking indicators is that that is the percentage that strongly disagree or disagree, meaning that, for example, students in the school follow rules of contact, conduct, excuse me, 69% are either, that was good math, 69%, I forget, is it five, is it a five-point scale or a four-point scale?
They're saying agree or?
So, agree, strongly agree.
Oh, four.
Okay, so a four-point scale, so it's either agree or strongly agree that students do follow. So, that's, it's not 31% agree, it is 31% disagree with that statement, and it's just a subtle little thing, if you, you have to read the headings to get that, so.
Exactly.
Anybody that watches this later.
Hey, context question, because I noticed it on slide 23, and then it makes an appearance as the second item on the lower table, the professional development sessions that have helped me meet my students' learning needs. And I was wondering, in your initial look at the granular data, because that was a jump, is there anything that comes out to you, Dr. Berdus or Dr. Burrows? Like, because I, I was wondering, and if there was like a, a knee-ask effect there, just because the few times I've had to do it, my PD got hijacked for part of a year having to attend to knee-ask, and I did, I was wondering what you saw as you took a pass at the finer level detail of data in that particular question.
I do think that potentially could be part of it. We have had to pull away for, for knee-ask, but I also look at that as being, helped me to better meet my student learning needs, that, that portion of, of that statement.
Very specific.
I, I do view it as being very specific, and, and some of the things that we've focused on promoting inclusivity, creating a safe and positive classroom environment, those might not necessarily get into the details of supporting student learning needs in, in the same way that universal design for learning might, where that was a focus in the, in the previous year.
Or like a data roundtable or something.
Yeah, so, I, I do feel like there, there's been a bit of a shift in, in what we've focused on and prioritized at the district level.
Fair.
In terms of, of social emotional learning and inclusion, and, and that shift, I, I think is a reasonable shift.
Sure.
So, that makes sense to me.
Okay, no, I appreciate, I appreciate the context, thank you. That's all I have.
So, as we move to students, I'm going to move on to that last slide that's showing those indicators as far as the highest and lowest rankings. You know, our students are telling us that parent engagement has increased, they're also mentioning, you know, behaviors of their peers as an area, just as we've seen from parents, and just as we've seen from faculty and staff. We've seen a great increase as far as favorability when it comes to our guidance counselors. They've done a lot of work to be able to meet students' needs from whether it's college and career planning, you know, post-secondary, being able to be there for personal problems as well as school-level problems, so really nice gains in those particular support areas. We know that we have different supports, you know, at the high school, you have a, a career counselor, you have a college counselor in addition to your guidance adjustment counselors. We've increased, over the last several years, it's been very slow to be able to do it, but our social workers and other supports that are for students, so.
If you, if you actually skip back to slide 44.
Yep.
Just want to point out, as, as Dirk, Dr. Berdus is mentioning, what a significant jump. And, you know, fortunately, our, our high school staff is, you know, it, those questions are particularly, particularly targeted toward our, toward our high school guidance staff, and look at those significant gains in, in how helpful our, our high school guidance department is being with supporting our students on those things, on college and career counseling, really doing a fantastic job, clearly, according to our, our biggest critics. So, I think that's great news.
Can I just ask, why is it NA for 21, 22? Is that a new question?
Yes.
I believe so.
We did not have that data from before.
Okay.
Because, and that came, and that's actually a really good example, when we went to some of the other anecdotal data that was there, because it was a matter of, well, not everyone is wanting to go to college, so they needed help. So, we, we needed to have a question there to say plans post-secondary, whatever they might be.
Because it's, it sort of was kind of embedded in the third question, and then the middle question was just the NA.
But we weren't getting to the kids as far as what.
Yeah.
Because we know that there's a, people might be thinking about taking a gap year.
Yeah.
They might be looking at going right into the, you know, the military or the workforce, and we weren't able, we weren't getting that data, so that was a question that was asked. And we weren't able, we weren't getting that data, so that was a question that was added.
That's fantastic. I've got a question. If you were to sum up the amount of hours you two worked on this, what do you think cumulatively it would be?
I don't think you want us to answer that.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. This is unbelievable. Nate, do you?
I have a question about the vaping indicator. It popped up in the teachers and like the faculty and staff and the students. Has there been progress on that over the last couple of years, or is it like staying the same?
I think that you see some progress here with the, just from last year to this year, but it's, but it's still definitely on the table as far as discussion. We've done things within the health curriculum. We're going down lower as far as grade levels to be more preventative, whether it's the health curriculum itself, whether it's our school resource officers and things that they're talking about, whether it's the parent engagement activities that we've had, trying to educate. So, a lot of effort is there. Sometimes you look at, you know, the number of the offenders. When we, one of the things that we have seen, when the percentage is higher, when you actually look at the incidents, it's the same students that are repeating over and over. So, it's, it's not as a big of a percent as what people might think. It's a small percent, but that small percent are repeat offenders.
And struggling.
And struggle. And that's why we have implemented other programs to be able to help students, to get them the help that they need. So, it's not a matter of just suspension, whether it's going through Safe Coalition and being able to have an alternative, Gosnold, which is another partnership that we've done this year that's new at the middle school and high school, being able to get kids the support that they need because they're asking for that help.
Right. No, that's, that's a nice set of new partnerships that I hope will bear fruit in those numbers over time.
But it is, I mean, and Nathan, you might be able to speak to this a little bit. It's a long survey. You've taken it many, many years.
Stevie shaking her head.
And Stevie has taken it as well, that's true. So, from both of your perspectives, you know, from that, just be curious, on the length of the survey, any comments that you have from a student perspective?
Karen, just give her the microphone if she wants to weigh in, please.
It's definitely very long. It's, but like, it's built into the school day, so it's not really an issue. As far as I know, the biggest issue with students in it is that they don't think or they don't see that their comments are being put into effect. That's the one thing that I hear every year, over and over and over again. But other, like, from what I see, it seems like it's okay. I do see improvements, but that's also because I see the actual data of it all, like, at times like this. But there's definitely like, probably smaller things that could be done, day-to-day things that could be done, that way students could see that their voice, their voice being heard more. But that's really the only thing.
Nice.
Thank you.
I mean, I would agree with all that. I think the fact that it's built into the class day definitely increases participation because if you ask students to go home and do this, you'd be lucky if you get 100 of them to do it. So, I think...
You'd get 15% like you do with the parents.
Yeah, if that. So, I think it's great how it's like set up in the class day. And I will say that, piggybacking off of what Stevie said, a lot of the students are like, are they actually reading this? Are they actually looking at this? Yes, yes, they are actually reading this. Yes, they are actually looking at it. So, I think if there's just like a way that like students could know that, like, maybe they got like a presentation or something showing or explaining to them that like, what they say is being heard, even though they might not think their exact one comment or concern is being addressed, that like, people hear about it and people are doing things about it.
That's a great comment. I just wanted to say, you've got Brent and Rob who have been with us for, what, going on six years, correct?
Correct.
Four.
Yeah.
You know, we've been here for a long time, and sometimes we start talking about a concept and we hear things from you guys, from administrators, and it takes three or four years to actually implement these plans and see the impact. Kids are in high school for four years, so I do appreciate that comment because maybe there's some way we could give them a little, a little update. Because sometimes, if they put something in a survey, they might be graduated, like, you know, Nate's graduating and gone, but Nate, you know, he's seeing the numbers because he's here, but maybe they don't, they don't feel heard because they don't see it, but sometimes it's slow to make change.
So, just to interject real quick, like, one of the things that changed that you could see is like with Webb at the middle school. So, that was transitioning to middle school that we hear from students' experience, from parents' experience, and that we have students that transition all throughout the entire school year. So, a big change that has been made is when you see the student leaders and they're meeting monthly and they're welcoming new students every single month during the school year. Looking at Link Crew, different things that happen throughout the school year. So, I think those are more concrete examples, but I definitely can appreciate the feedback on making it more explicit as far as those changes.
I think in general, if you, I mean, everybody wants to feel like if I'm going to take all this time to respond to this, right, then I want to at least see some impact that happened, whether it's the impact that I wanted to see happen, but I want to see that something was done with the data, right? So, that goes across the board, whether it's students or parents or faculty members, whoever takes any type of survey, we all want that.
Sure.
I think you have to be careful of not, going back to what I talked about with innovation earlier, of not seeding the answer as well, right? So, you don't want people to say, you, you don't want to predispose people to certain answers because they, you've been explicit about the action that was taken. You have, that's a, it's a fine line you have to walk. And I can imagine, you've done it, you've done it several times here today, tonight, right? Which is, this is the feedback that we got, you know, communication at the district level, one of the reasons that you started the newsletter or the monthly update, right? So, those things, just those simple reminders are important. I do have a question just in general about the survey as well, because what you tend to see in long surveys, again, not necessarily drop-off, but people's attention to detail in their response, you get bored, right? You get bored. If it's always those same four choices, you get bored. Does K-12, I don't remember this about K-12, do they allow you to randomize the order across your population that questions are asked?
No. They, they are the order that they present.
Okay. Because that would be, because you get, you get sort of...
Yes, because some of them are, I just lost the terminology, branched. They have the branching within the questions. So, for instance, when you go to school leadership as, you know, if, if you ever had a problem that you need to bring forward, if they say no, then that's taking them to a different question next. If they say yes, then it's branched, and then they want more information about, well, did you feel like you were listened to, you know?
Right.
You know, that, that kind of...
Right. And but they, we can talk about it later, because I, I would love if they could randomize...
Sections?
Yes. So, even content areas. Randomizing that, because that'll still allow you the branching, might subtly change some of these responses. Because again, like any other, when you have to fill in the little circles, they still don't fill the circles in standardized tests? Do we still do that? Okay, thank you, Stevie. At some point, you get tired of filling in the little circle, and you just look for what fun pattern can I make, right? See, you gotcha. Yeah, so, okay, cool. Thank you. Enough.
Last, I mean, this goes along with what you said, Sarah and Rob and Amy. This is a plug for this, and people are really using the data. Where I've seen it, from the school committee side, just on this, like, on the broad strokes is heading into the season where we look at building improvement plans. We just went through district goals, plan for success, superintendent goals, but the more granular stuff, it always shows up in the school improvement plan, always. And that's, that's, it's just cool. I mean, not that students and parents are poring over those, but it exists and it happens every year.
I think this is just one big plug for everyone to watch more school committee meetings.
Well, I mean, it's happening here, Sarah. I mean, we are really where it's at. I didn't have any more questions, but thanks.
Michelle, do you have anything?
No.
Anyone have anything else? Thank you, guys. I'm sure that the numbers are high. Back to my hour, how many hours question, so thank you for all your determination and...
Well, and the last point that I'll make, Sarah, which is, you're saying, you know, asking the question, how much time is spent on this? It also comes in pockets. We revisit this at different times during the school year.
Yeah.
For different purposes. We, like I said at the beginning, I think, we leverage this when it comes to grants. We leverage this when it comes to the school improvement plan, the district plan. We leverage it when we have to answer something to the Department of Education on how are we getting the voices heard? So, we come back to it at different times, but it also serves different purposes at different times.
Yeah. Data's always valuable, always. All right. Any, anything else?
No.
All right. Well, thank you again. We're going to move on. We have acceptance of, we have two generous donations here, one from Foxborough Cross-Country Track and Field Club, the other one from Foxborough Touchdown Club. And we do need motions to accept on both these, please.
Just as background, these are coaching support, correct?
The first one, Foxborough Cross-Country Track and Field Club, is $1,000 to assist with the track and field program expenditures.
That's right.
And then the second one is the Foxborough Touchdown Club. It's a restricted donation to pay for additional coaching for the football program, and that's $2,500.
Thank you. Separate motions, yep?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I move to accept the generous donation from the Foxborough Cross-Country and Track and Field Club and the amount of $1,000 to support expenditures with much gratitude.
A second? Great. Any further discussion or questions on this? Seeing none, all in favor? And that would be a 5-0-0 agreement on that.
If I may, the second...
Yes.
Unless anyone else wants to...
By all means.
I move to accept with much gratitude the Foxborough Touchdown Club's generous donation and the amount of $2,500 to support coaching staffing for the football program. Second.
Any further discussion or questions on this? All right, all in favor? And this one also passes at 5-0-0. Now, we are on to our last and final agenda items, and that is community updates. We're going to start down with Rob, and we'll go right around.
Yeah, so I actually do have two updates that I'd like to provide on the rec department. The first is, we have confirmed and strongly requested that the rec department, when looking for volunteers from the students at the school, follow the protocols that we ask all other organizations to follow, which is by going through either a building head or by going to one of the faculty sponsors of those organizations. I was able to provide the contact information to the new Director of Recreation, Kristen Pellerin, last week, so she has that, all of that contact information available to her. And like I said, we've requested that they, strongly requested that they follow those protocols moving forward rather than trying to follow the informal network. The second thing is, not to bore you with the details of this, but I did want to let you know, at the last board meeting, we had a large discussion about potential projects to use up about $200,000 of the rec committee's revolving fund. I abstained from that vote. I just wanted, I just tried to be transparent about how I voted on budget expenditures for two different reasons. One, it wasn't clear to me some of the background and what the projects were. And two, ultimately, I don't feel comfortable voting on large budget potential, but these, none of these were concrete decisions, they were potential projects. But I do not feel comfortable voting as a representative of the school committee, voting on large budget expenditures for the rec department, because I do not know how this committee would vote on those items, so it's better for me to abstain rather than, you know, try to represent my personal opinion instead of the opinion of this committee. So, I just wanted to provide that update to you.
Thank you. Nate? Michelle?
Nope, no community, please.
Ah, nothing, okay. Brent?
Nothing this time.
Dr. Berdus?
Yes.
Karen? No one's got anything tonight. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn on that note.
So moved. Can we adjourn? No, move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second.
Everybody wants a stay, all in favor of adjournment. All right, unanimous. Good night, everybody.